Good afternoon. I call this November 9, 2021, virtual meeting of the Board of Finance to order. First on the agenda, approval of minutes. I move to approve the August 31, 2021 Board of Finance meeting minutes. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Barboia. All in favor, say aye. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll. And let it be noted that Commissioner Casada is excused for this meeting.
Mr. Barboia.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. O'Malley.
Aye.
Oh, I'm gonna jump that. Madam Chair Pescotti.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Next up, presentation. Board of Finance report. Madam Treasurer to present.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board of Finance. Thank you for your time. Of course, my name is Nancy Burse, your County Treasurer, and we're here for the quarterly report for the quarter ending September 30, 2021. My deputy is running the presentation, so if you have any questions, he can't see you raise your hands or anything, but I can, so just let me know. All right, next page. There's our agenda for the presentation. It follows the same pattern that we have all the time. Next slide. And first off, we lead with our property tax collections. Please remember, this is as of September 30. And you see your three years there of collected taxes, 2018, 2019, and 2020. So you can see the taxes that we collected in 2020. That has officially ended our time, although we still always like to collect. If there's anything outstanding, and you can see that there is some uncollected for all the years. I will say also that this report will be the last time the rest of this year that you'll see the 2018 year, because next quarter, of course, we will be into the 2021 tax collection year, so that will come on this chart. 2018 will fall off. Do you ever need that information? Of course, we always have that for you. Next slide. So, oh, let me just mention, just for the record, so that it can be in the minutes, that we did collect $741 million, just a little over that, for the 2020 year. For the collections as a percentage of the tax year, we did really fantastically well. So just shy of 98% of the 2020 collections, property taxes were collected. That's very comparable to the previous two years, and just feeling very fortunate on that, given all the things that have gone on this past year. So we were really happy with that. Next slide. Some of the things here that we'd like to share with you, just on an operational level, is our call volume comparing this quarter with the 2020 quarter. And you can see there that, starting in the left, top-left chart, the call volume, the call volume there, you can see, we kind of spiked in August. Not sure why, other than in August, everybody did get their delinquent notices in June, and they were hearing from us about collecting their delinquent taxes. So there were a little higher call volume going on. But you can see, we roughly average about 4,000 calls a month. So that's pretty significant for us. Right below that chart, the delinquent account turnover to the state, we do have the 2021 number there, and that is the number of properties that have turned to the third year delinquent. And at that point, we turn that real property over to the state to collect. And that was, we turned over 642 properties to the state for the fiscal year '21 for their collections. So that's a new number. We're not unhappy with that. It may seem high. But when you look at 2020, you can see that was 750. That had spiked, of course, during COVID and the unemployment that we had. People weren't paying down their delinquent taxes. So we're glad to see that that's come down, and we'll continue to work on that this year as well. The big chart with the delinquent collections, again, just wanted to point out a few things. When you look at the July 2021, what you'll see there is the real property in the light blue that really ranked high with 874,000 delinquencies that we got, or the money that we got. When you look at August, you can really see that light blue bar jumping up to a million and a half that were collected. Again, that probably does feed into the phone calls there. So we were doing a lot of talking and collecting on delinquent accounts. But September, I also want to point out, is the gray bar that came up in September of 2021. And we usually haven't been seeing this, but this is personal property, which equates to business equipment most of the time. And you can see that that jumped up to 736,000, and that represents one account that was a medical company that hadn't paid their business taxes, their personal property business equipment taxes for over two years. And you can see how that jumps up. That's something, when I came into this office, we had not put into our strategy as far as collecting business equipment, personal property taxes. It was almost all real property that was in the delinquent collections bucket. But when I came into the office, I said, fair is fair. The state law applies both to businesses as well as residential. So we put that back on the target, and it's starting to really pay off. And I think last quarter, I talked to you about another business along the I-25 corridor. So you can really see how this does impact the amount of money that we collect, and we should be fair in how we collect our taxes. So that's the delinquent collections. I'll stop or pause if there's any questions. Okay, see none, I'll keep going. Next slide.
I did have one question, sorry.
Oh, no, that's fine. Thank you, Commissioner.
On the previous one, just on the previous slide, and I thank you all the things. The call volume was surprising to me, and I guess this is July of 2020 and 2021. Do you know if 2019 was largely different, just because I mean, both of these are COVID years, right? So what's a normal year and how much difference?
That is a great question, Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboia.
You know, it's not important for now, I'm just curious, but...
No, generally, we do average about 3,000 calls a month. So you can see, this has spiked up a little bit when it goes up to 4,000 and 5,000 during these past two years. But we... What happens in this quarter is that whole impact of sending out the delinquent notices in June, and then collecting and making all those phone calls outgoing and incoming. So you'll see that pretty representative in this quarter. Great question. Thank you.
Madam Treasurer, I have a quick question.
Wonderful.
Yeah, how many people do you have working for you who answer these calls?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Pescotti, members of the board, that's an also good question. Of course, we have 38 employees in our office. So, and now that, you know, we have moved through and been early adopters of the Ring Central system, which is a true call service system. Anybody who can be on the calls can get into the calls. So we have customer service. We have five people there. You know, delinquent accounts is another five, special accounts who handle the monthly payments and the... I'm blanking, I'm sorry. Monthly payments can also get on the phone, and there's three staff there. So we've got, you know, we're able to all get on that Ring Central and take calls.
Yeah, that's amazing. And that's a huge call volume, and I have to say, I love seeing your people at the counter on the first floor of Overato Square. They're always very friendly, and they always wave back to me when I give them a big hello when I walk in.
Well, Commissioner, if they never wave back, you better tell them.
Thanks.
You're welcome. The next slide is our pie chart on where all that money gets distributed. Because again, I collect on behalf of all the entities that are in the county. So you can see for the fiscal year where that money went into categories. I changed this up a little bit, thinking that we need to know where in groups of money that's going to, what topics. And the categories, as you can see, 34% go to education. And all the education entities are collapsed into that portion of the pie chart. So you think APS, you think the charters, you think CNM. And that's really important to us and to the public, to know where their money's going. 22% is evenly distributed there between the county and the cities and villages. So you think of that going to local governments that we have in Burnaleo County. And that's important, because we forget there's Los Ranchos, there's the Village of Tejadas, and everything in between. So we don't want to forget that we have a lot of little places, and I collect on their behalf as well. And then the health component, 15% of our property taxes go to U&amp;M Hospital. And that's an important, critical need, and that one is not just for use by the residents of Burnaleo County, but for the whole state. So we know that's a good piece. Environment, we don't ever want to lose track of what's going on in our environment and support those agencies. AMAFCA, your Middle Rio Grande Conservancy District, and your Edgewood Soil/Water Conservancy District are a part of that. And then a little bit to the state. So that's how they, it kind of, how your money stretches out to all the different entities. Next slide. And I think this is where we transition to Deputy Treasurer Scott.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Treasurer. So just to start off, point of order, again, I can't really see hand raises, so just shout those questions at me. I promise I won't be offended, just so that way I can make sure I'm being responsive. So the first slide I have is the bank balances and collateral slide. And as I've always said, this is probably one of the more important slides that I present on, because it directly speaks to that safety principle. Remember, when we do our investments, we always look at safety, liquidity, and yield in that order. And this, of course, is sort of a testament to that safety, one of many, but definitely one of them. And for a requirement, the State Treasurer's Office requires Wells Fargo to at least keep 50% collateral balances. As you can see here, we're well above that. And the reason for that is, again, this is a snapshot in time, right? So this is literally the collateral as of September 30, 2021. And so when those balances fluctuate, obviously, the collateral will too. So that's why we have a little bit more pledged collateral at that one time than we normally would be required to have. Then, of course, there's two other breakouts for Wells Fargo. The Wells Fargo Housing Nonprofit Account actually has to have a higher collateral rate, just based on their covenants. That's at 102. And then, of course, we serve as a fiscal agent there, so that's just a fully collateralized account. And then, of course, to your right, you have our two ICS accounts, that's insured cash sweeps. And essentially, again, what that is, is those are the pockets of money that we have at Bank of the West, but they split that money out into all the different banks so that they can stay below the $250,000 FDIC insurance. So as you can see there, it's fully insured, because it falls under that FDIC coverage. And then finally, we have my favorite, the legacy repurchase agreements that we keep for debt defeesance. Those are actually collateralized at 105%, if I'm not mistaken. We'll never sell those repurchase agreements, though, because we get a healthy 6% on that money. If you know of anywhere we can get 6%, please give them my personal line, because we definitely want to do that. So we definitely enjoy keeping that money there, but we have to. So it's nothing that we can sell anyway, but I certainly wouldn't with 6% return. Okay, then we have the operating portfolio breakdown. Let me take a few minutes here. I'm sure you guys are well aware of the three bucket strategy that we have. Of course, the liquidity component of the operating funds is basically comprised of the highly liquid and the liquid ladder. That highly liquid bucket that must mature within 30 days, and it must be 15% of the operating budget of the county. And I don't think I've had a chance to say this at a Board of Finance, but for fiscal year 2022, that number is 82.7 million. So that 15% requirement, we must have at least 82.7 million. That's a slight increase over fiscal year '21, which was at 82.5. So basically, it's almost flat. So that's that bucket. And then, of course, we have the liquid ladder, which 60 million must mature within 12 months. That ladder actually goes out as of today to January of 2024, if I'm not mistaken, but we have 5 million maturing each month. And then, of course, we have the core portfolio, which is the DFA 312 Reserve in the 5% requirement. Think of that money as just money that the county shouldn't need anytime soon, and that's expertly managed by our friends at Public Trust. And I know Ash, I'm like a Silas Thunder, and he'll go over that in his time. So just as a quick strategy update for the operating funds portfolios, just a few things to note here. One, one of the highest balances we keep is with the local government investment pool that's managed by the State Treasurer's Office. We have 109 million in that bucket. And the reason why is because we're getting a healthy six basis points, which is the best we could get in this market. Just to let you guys know, too, just to make sure everyone's familiar with what a basis point is. So 100 basis points is 1%, right? So 10 basis points is 0.1%. And we're getting six basis points, which is 0.06% for that money. But that's better than what we get in the money market. So, for example, we have 65 million in the ARPA money market, as you can see there. We'll get three and a half basis points there. And I think in the Bank of the West ICS, we're getting another three basis points. So again, State Treasurer's Office doing gangbusters and giving us a little bit more than what we would get practically anywhere else. Another thing, just to let you know, the CARES Act money is fully exhausted now. But as of this writing, so to be fair, this is September 30. I think we still had 46 cents in there, so that's why that $1 is showing there. But that is completely gone, I promise. Then, of course, we have listed there all of the treasury and agency securities that we currently hold, which has a market value of about 278 million. Before I turn it over to Ash, any quick questions?
I'm not seeing any, Ken.
Perfect. Ash, throwing it to you.
Thank you, Ken. And since you've reviewed most of my presentation already, I'm gonna go through it fairly quickly. Thank you to the Commissioners and Chair for letting me speak. This data is from September 30, so there has been a few changes to the portfolio, but not many. More to the environment rather than the portfolio itself. But Ken, we can just kind of go through this. We mentioned with the liquidity ladder, as of October 9, was out to December 15. We have just pushed it out to January of 2024, so we are at 26 months of liquidity at $5 million a month, and that has laddered out in that smooth ladder, all equal dispersions. Go ahead, next slide to Ken, please. As you can see here, this is the liquidity ladder. The market value of this portion of the portfolio is 137,596. This is as of September 30. And over the quarter, we were able to earn about $165,000 with those dollars. Again, current interest rate environment is not great for investing these dollars right now. We are seeing a little bit of an uptick on some of the shorter-term yields, and that is going to be something we'll work on with the Treasurer and the Finance Departments to to put some extra funds to work a little bit longer out as the environment gets more warm to our type of investing. Next slide, Ken. And please, if anyone has any questions, feel free to interrupt me. I don't take it personally, like Ken. Again, the core portfolio is the longer-term strategy. It's managed to a zero-to-five-year benchmark. The money in that portfolio prior to COVID was very well protected and actually ended up, you know, being a very good investment for the county when interest rates went to zero. We were able to, you know, really drag out some of that some of that yield over the environment where there was no yield to be had. So we are coming to the point now where a lot of those things are maturing, since it's been 18, 19 months of this zero environment. And we're projecting to see those rates starting to increase next year, and you'll seeing some activity in the markets that are indicating that's a very good possibility. Next slide, Ken. So the core portfolio is broken down mostly into US government and government-sponsored entities. You can see on the lower left-hand corner, that's the asset allocation. About 87% in government assets, and government-sponsored entities make up another 12.5%. That portfolio is valued at $142 million right now. We are capped at 140 million. That's just the increase that was from the value of the assets going up during the interest rate decline. And that portfolio earned us about $278,000 over the quarter. As you can see, the liquidity ladder is about the same value, and because we were able to push that money out, we were able to gain an extra $100,000 over the quarter with about the same amount of money. So that's been very helpful for the county. Next slide is going to be, I believe, our portfolio performance. And it's tough to talk to this slide right now, because performance over the last year has basically been zero. I mean, we've seen the gains that were realized initially, and we are eking out a yield that is fairly good compared to the rest of the liquidity assets. So the managed portfolio is averaging about 54 basis points right now, I believe, on those dollars. So that's money that's actually just performing to what we need it to do. Next slide, Ken. So if everyone's familiar with the bond proceeds portfolio, this is managed to a draw schedule that is discussed on our monthly meetings. We are able to work with Finance and Treasury to, you know, make sure that the money that's sitting there or hasn't been spent gets pushed out appropriately and is able to earn any additional dollars, if possible. And the Finance Team and Treasury Team has done a fantastic job of, you know, knowing what's going on, managing the cash flows, and allowing us to put some money out and earn additional income for the county as well. If we look at the next slide, you know, this is a pretty unstable, to say, account, because money comes in and out, or money goes out on a monthly basis and comes in, I believe, on a yearly basis. So you see it dwindle down and then is replenished over the year. Right now, that balance is about 47. Again, as of September 30, that balance is about 45 million. And again, because these are all very, very short-term dollars, the yield on those assets was very minimal, and we earned about $9,000 on the 45 million. But it is positive, it is safe, and that's really the key of these portfolios, of this portfolio, is to earn as much as we can, but make sure that it's liquid when we need it. And the next slide, I believe, is back to you, Ken.
Yep. And just to sort of belabor the point that Ash made, yes, this is definitely a tough market. You can see that here, sort of. But what I think I will say, though, Ash, and I think your last point is actually the correct one. I'm actually still proud of this number. I still, this is still my favorite slide, right? Because what this is showing is, to Ash's point, you know, we make money in a very safe manner, positive manner, so that the county is protected, but we still have those dollars coming in. And I think that's what this shows, right? And all the investments that we've made, not just this quarter, but, you know, certainly since I've been with the Treasurer's Office, really reflect that, right? Yes, it's not the 2.4 million per quarter that we were getting before COVID, but we're making less than a million in a very safe manner, right? That has plenty of liquidity baked in, that is still getting a positive return for the county until the county is still protected. And quite frankly, that's the sort of the ethos of public finance, right? You know, make sure it's safe, make sure it's liquid, and then, once those two criterias met, get every basis point you possibly can, and that's what that number reflects. So I'm certainly proud of the work that we do. Before I turn it over to Madam Treasurer, as you guys probably didn't realize, I didn't have any economic slides. If you guys have questions over economics, I certainly can talk. You know, I love hearing myself talk. But I'll turn it over to Madam Treasurer, and if you guys want me to go over sort of a high-level economics, I'm glad to do so. Madam Treasurer.
Thank you, Ken. Before I start this, I just wanted to make a point. I was looking at, you know, the slide of our operating funds portfolio, and we talk about that. The State Treasurer has that local government investment pool and how it's outperforming. And I just want to say that one of the things I feel really good about is the Treasurer's affiliate through the New Mexico Association of Counties, because what we were able to pass last year was to look at, now, let me think, is it last year or the year before, where we were able to pass through the legislature some new investment opportunities, specifically the commercial paper and the super nationals. And if I'm not mistaken, I think it was the super nationals that the State Treasurer was able to grab a few of. And I think that's really been able to be wonderful for their portfolio and kind of get them get them rocking and rolling. So some of those investment tools, you know, when we see a need, we go and talk to people and try and get those things clarified in state statute. So just to put that out there for you. So looking at our other office news, what we have is the property tax delay. If you did hear me on TV this morning, it was announcing that property taxes are going to be delayed for 2021. Specifically, just like in 2019, it was because of a school district mill levy that was on the voter ballot last week, and it was the Moriarty Edgewood School District. And I know some of us, I got some comments about... And I know some of us, uh, I got some comments about, well, what does Moriarty have to do with Burnley County? And we forget that we're one of only one or two uh, counties that have um, single school districts like A P S. The only other one that comes to mind is Los Alamos. And all the other counties are bigger inland and usually consist of three to four school districts. So they're dealing with this all the time in school districts because they are their own entity and ruled by their own boards. They make their own boundaries and report up to the state's Public Education Department. So we had Moriarty uh, ba- mill levy and bond that was on the ballot. So we had to delay that until we know what the results were. So uh, your ballot, I mean, your collection bill uh, will be delayed exactly one month. So we're gonna mail those out by December first. Your due dates will be starting December tenth, and you have thirty days to pay. So your ending date would be January tenth of twenty twenty two. So those are our dates. Now, this is the last off cycle delay of a school district under the Local Elections Act. Uh, so this this won't ever happen again, fingers crossed. With that delay and kind of opening up from last year's COVID, uh, I'm going back out on the road for outreach events. So we have senior centers, multi generational centers that I'll be going to, I'll be going to T V stations, radio stations. Our websites are already updated, including F A Qs uh, about the delay. So all that is in process and really, really putting the the full force back in. Um, and this delay did affect fourteen counties. We're not the only ones. So uh, fourteen other or thirteen other counties are arguing the same thing. Um, let's see, last is the uh, annual uh, internal audit that we have. We have had our first meeting on that, and I know really the the collection of the data and the sampling, you know, is gonna start in January and probably wraps up in February. So, but um, we always look forward to uh, working with our internal auditors. Always feel like that's an opportunity to showcase not only what we do, but if there's any improvements or tweaking that we need, we're always about that and looking how to do things better and more efficiently, more effectively. So we have that, uh, that's that's going on. Um, and lastly, is that, is that the end of the presentation, I thought? Yeah, uh, the only other thing is the the reports that you have in your reporting packet, the uh, performance metrics, the tax maintenance report, and the collateral report that are in there. Um, but I did want to uh, just make the announcement to you that um, I regretfully, or sadly, I should say, actually, um, have accepted um, the resignation of uh, Deputy Treasurer Scott. He's gonna be moving on to some really fantastic things, and uh, we wish him the best. But the past four and a half years have been wonderful to have him here, uh, serving myself and serving the Treasurer's Office. And uh, really want to to thank him for effort, I mean, just tireless work uh, that he's done and and really appreciate. Thank you. Thank you, Ken.
And thank you, Madam Treasurer. Um, it has been truly an honor um, to serve with each and every one of you and the constituents of Burnley County. Um, literally an opportunity of a lifetime. And and quite frankly, I I have met lifelong friends here at the county. This really is a family, right? Um, and we all really care about, you know, doing the right thing and doing the right thing for our constituents. And and so with that, you know, it was just a great experience for me. Obviously, I have to to move on to other things that I have to do, specifically studying for a really hard finance test that I'm already uh, dreading uh, going into that room. Um, but of course, Burnley County will always have a piece of my heart, and anything that anyone from the county needs, I'm just a call away, quite frankly. Um, as I, as I mentioned earlier, if you hear of anyone with six percent treasury rates, we are definitely interested. As long as it's in the short end of the curve, we're not going far out. Um, tell them to give me a call. I'll lock that in for the county for sure. But thank you, Madam Treasurer, and again, thanks to every, each and every one of you, and even for people who are not necessarily here. Um, Tim Olivas, that's my guy. I loved him. Tim and I really bonded over the last few years. Um, I know he's gonna miss me, you know, waving my hands and complaining about inflation for the last six months, which I think he heard every week, poor guy. Um, but it's gonna, it's 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 uh, just been a blessing and it's something that I will never forget. Uh, Commissioner O'Malley, I think you have a question?
I ju- I just wanted to thank you and wish you well. Yeah, and thank you for the work that you've done, and you know, it's it's been stellar.
Thank you.
And you'll be missed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Ken, it's been great. It's been great knowing you and working with you. You are just the ultimate professional. And Burnley County has been so lucky to have you for the past four and a half years. You're so good at what you do. And I hope wherever you're moving on to, that they just appreciate you and love you because we do, so they better treat you right. Um, are you, maybe you don't wanna say where you're going, but are you still gonna be in the Albuquerque area?
I am. Uh, like I said, I'm I'm gonna get some certifications first, but then eventually I'll start my own business. Um, but, you know, you know, Burnley County may have been supposed to have me, but likewise, right? Like I said, I I really enjoyed the county. I really enjoyed the constituents. Um, you know, even the constituents in East Mountains, for example, uh, Commissioner Pescotti, uh, Clyde Deputy Deputy Assessor, uh, Clyde was in the office, and we were telling that one thing that we know about District Five, they know their tax bill very, very well. Do not try to sneak anything on a tax bill with them. Uh, so they are really, and you know, it's just stuff like that that I'm I'm gonna miss. Um, but but thank you for the kind words. Oh, um, Madam Clerk.
Oh, Kenny, I'm gonna miss you too. You've done a stellar job for us, but the friendship has been really special. I've enjoyed that in the last week had. You're a super guy. I wish you luck.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I really appreciate it. And I'll make sure to talk to Jamie and Jamie before I leave. I know they're gonna want us to say something.
Oh, they will. They will.
Uh, Madam County Manager.
I just wanna echo everybody's comments, and we're all gonna miss you, and we wish you well, Kenny. Uh, you have done an awesome job, and we've enjoyed working with you. So we wish you the very, very best. And don't forget, you're a burn po family. We're always here for you.
And likewise, I'm here for you guys. Give me a call. I mean that. I tell Tim that all the time, but I really mean that.
Okay, thanks, Kenny.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, um, I was raising my hand, but I just wanna ask, uh, Madam uh, Treasurer. I disagree with everybody's comments here and wanna see if you can reject that resignation. Uh, I'm very disappointed, and it's not acceptable, and um, I'm not gonna accept it.
Thank you so much.
Would you like to second that?
Uh, can we, can we have a vote real quick?
Yeah. I can't get my hand up. I don't know where it's, it's somewhere lost on my screen, but Kenny and I are from the same state. We're Georgia children. So, um,
Yes, we are.
Uh, and I've enjoyed him. I've enjoyed the uh, working with him. It's been a real good relationship with the Treasurer's office and the Finance Division, and him and Tim were like, sometimes I had to spank their hands. And then you throw ash in there, and it was like three, three young, young men fighting and and carrying on. But it was a family thing and all about caring about doing the right thing for the county. And so
Very true.
You can't ask for more than that.
Very true.
But I tried to do the same thing, Commissioner Benson. I tried to go to H R and throw away the paperwork. I tried all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, there's gotta be some kind of recourse we can, I mean, we can't just, we don't have to accept.
I resorted to begging. I got on my knees and started begging.
That's what it takes.
Yeah, I'm I'm ready.
You've been, you've been amazing to work with Ken, and it's only been through Zoom, which um, has been a frustration for me just in general. And uh, you've been able to work around it. Uh, and you and uh, Madam Treasurer are a great team. And uh, man, it's, it's been a pleasure to work with you, and I look forward to, I hope we can continue working together or at least, uh, you know, rubbing elbows in the future, whatever you're doing.
Of course, of course. Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that.
Yeah, agree to everything, and I'm like, come on, I need a little bit more time. I'm learning here.
You still call me. I can, like, like I said, I'm gonna be studying for a really difficult test soon anyways.
Well, and it sounds like between, we need to recruit more in Georgia, sounds like.
Agreed.
Got all our bright talents.
I still see Commissioner O'Malley's hand up or no? Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Um, so, yes, take, take our, take our love with you, Ken. Wherever you go, we're gonna still track you down, so. Anyway, uh, back to business here. Um, Madam Treasurer, we have advice and consent. Um, do I just go right into that, or did you wanna say something?
Uh, I, you can go right into it, Madam Chair. I would appreciate that. It's uh, something we we do quarterly on our investment strategy.
Mm-hmm, okay. Um, I move to it, give advice and consent to the proposed quarterly investment strategy as outlined in the Board of Finance report. Is there a second? Someone, oh, Commissioner O'Malley, thank you, and all in favor? And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboah.
Hi.
Mr. Benson.
Hi.
Mr. O'Malley.
Hi.
Madam Chair Pescotti.
Hi.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. And so next approvals, Madam Treasurer to present on our Investment Advisory and Funds Management Services.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board of Finance. Um, I'm like, uh, well, I I can't make the motion. But uh, we um, know that recently, we we went out to bid on our Investment Advisor contract uh, that expires in February. And uh, we're still in process with that, and because of the timing, uh, we ask that uh, the Board of Finance consider uh, giving authority to the County Commission, the Board of County Commissioners, to award and execute uh, the Professional Service Agreement when it's completed uh, for the Investment Advisory and Funds Management Services. Uh, it is that timing thing. We, our next meeting for the Board of Finance is in until the end of February, uh, which is coincidentally the same time when the contract expires. So we'll need action before that, and that's the reason for um, this request. And uh, I stand for any questions.
Okay, any questions?
Madam Chair, I move approval.
Hands. Okay, great. Um, I'll go ahead and second, and all in favor, and Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Madam Clerk, please unmute yourself.
Mr. Barboah.
Hi.
Mr. Benson.
Hi.
Mr. O'Malley.
Hi.
Madam Chair Pescotti.
Hi.
Hi, Kenny.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. And so, announcement of the next Board of Finance meeting, that will be Tuesday, February twenty second in twenty twenty two at four P M. in the Ken, Ken Sanchez Commission Chambers, and may it be so. And if there is no other business, this meeting is adjourned.